We're all set aside, if you can have attention please. We have the Pledge of Allegiance and you've got your names.
Yes, we have some wonderful students here to lead us in our pledge. Sarah Donovan, Maddie Dunlop, and Everly Leavitt. Will you please come right up here? Thank you very much. So what we do is we'll have you guys start the pledge and then listen to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Sarah, Maddie, and Jacob, and Everly, yours will be on the way tomorrow morning. Alright, thanks for coming tonight kids, it's nice to see you all. I think Jacob is ready to go.
Dragon's breathing in here.
Motion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
May I have a Jim? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, I've got the manifest here, I'll be passing it around. There's no registrations, no nominations, Superintendent's report.
I just wanted to give a brief update on our ongoing professional development activities. Today I spent at least a couple of hours with our middle school and high school staff with a fabulous literacy, reading and writing expert named Penny Kittle. And she is trying to help us to engage reluctant readers and writers at the high school and middle school levels. And I have to say that I have met a kindred spirit. We are very excited to have her be here. She, her values and her beliefs and her practices in instruction align perfectly with the vision for the district. So I couldn't have been happier. And I can't tell you enough what a difference the professional development funds have made that you all have given to the district over the last year. So I just want to quickly let you know that in the summer, we had a number of teachers and administrators sent to the Teachers College, Columbia University for Writing Institute and Reading Institute work, which is some of the best PD in the world. It is incredibly competitive. They have 8,000 applicants for a couple thousand spots and we had almost 10 people get in. I've worked with Columbia for 10 years. So we are really looking forward to the next step, which is with the money for next year, we will be asking Columbia to come here so that we can have the teachers get the training in-house and not have to pay to send them down there and do that work there. We're also, Dr. Haynes has led some really important work around implementing a phonics program for kindergarten and first grade, which as you know, phonics is a critical component of early reading. And so she's been doing some great work with Columbia to figure out how they use their phonics program that's newly developed and we are looking forward to implementing that. We have, the list of PD accomplishments is so long, I'm not going to read it all. I'm just going to simply say to you that between OGAP training, which is Ongoing Assessment Program, Orton Gillingham to help kids who struggle with dyslexia, content area work across grade levels, PACE assessments, multisensory education, and we've had a team of teachers that went to the New England Secondary Schools Consortium, that was just July and August. All of those events. So in the fall, which is only really three months, we've had in-service programs, we've had coaching in literacy from some experts that I worked with in Maine who are incredibly effective in helping kids learn how to read and write better in the workshop model. We've had professional development on how to handle staff evaluations for administration. And we've also had some incredible negotiations training. We have had all of our district employees trained in CPR. And we've also provided significant training in the ALIS model for safety, which ALIS is a nationally adopted model that empowers teachers to make critical decisions in real time based on real information when there's a safety threat in the building. Mr. Dawson has created an incredible walkthrough video that will be released in the next couple of months to the parents to explain the ALIS model. And we also have purchased a module to provide training for staff that certifies them in the ALIS model. In the event that we ever have an event, we can, we can say that our staff has been trained at the national level with certification. So we are really, I can't thank the Board and the Budcom enough for the professional development funds that we've had in our budget. I did not feel comfortable asking for more considering that we're in process with the work on the reorganization of the district. But I want you all to know that that, that money is going to great use and you will, as I've said repeatedly, I'm on point every time, intervention in professional development are the keys to the success of our district and I'm really looking forward to the future growth. So that's my superintendent's upgrade, upgrade, update? Update this evening.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to remind the Chair, we have a remote participant tonight and for RSA 91A, we have a couple of requirements.
Yep, okay. I know you can't see him, but we can, Cory's offsite, but he can hear everything, he'll vote, you know.
And just so we know that I'm alone in the room in Austin, Texas, at the Arboretum.
And the reason that his personal attendance is not practical needs to be included in the minute.
There's a bit of a change on the agenda, I just want to cover it with you. We now put the times, and they are approximate times. The superintendent and I sit down the Thursday before the Wednesday meeting and try to figure out how much time each one of these is going to take. It's kind of like figuring out how much a hungry man's going to eat. Because we don't know how much people are going to talk, are they going to talk five minutes, 10 minutes? And I'm not talking about, I'm talking about school board members. They may be an issue that comes up and everybody gets excited. But I do want to let you know, we will try to keep to this so that people can look at it and if they're coming home from work or something and say, gee, I want to go to that meeting because I see they're going to discuss whatever at 7:30. We'll try to hold close to that 7:30, but I want you to know it's approximate times because if we put the time down, then we're locked into that time, alright? Because that's when people come. So we made sure we put down approximate times right at the top. So just understand, there's a bit of a change there, but this way the people are better informed, as Tom uses all the time, transparency.
By the same token, Mr. Chairman, when we say we're going to have a forum discussion at seven, then we should hold to that seven.
Yes.
That's not to say we can't move forward and take care of some other business.
Other agenda items and then go back to that.
Just want to clarify that.
We did that last week, we tabled something for a few minutes.
Right, that's fine.
So we will, we will be as close to that time as we possibly can. But if we get excited and people say, no, we're not going to recess for a second, that's beyond my, my ability. Is there anything beyond my abil-? No.
Don't ask.
Wait a minute, I got it, no. Okay, committee reports, policy.
Policy met tonight and we reviewed some C policies for first read on the 19th. And we will have our next meeting on January 9th at 4:45 PM. On December 19th, we'll have first read on six C policies and we'll do a second read on the A and B policies we had already looked at.
I would like to ask a question if I can. Do you have the policies written up with the changes we talked about?
I'm sending those out tomorrow morning.
Very good, because what I would like to do, and this is up to the Board to think about it between now and the next meeting, is perhaps just have a motion as read. So make sure you read them and see the changes are in there in case you want to, because to read them all again, she's going to need a gallon of water. And I don't think that's practical time, you know, use of our time. Because you also have to do the first read of the other one.
Right.
So that's what I would like to do, let's see how it works.
How are the changes going to be denoted?
Well, I have a revised cover sheet.
Can they be in bold or italics or color?
I put them in red. I put the changes in red, so you can see we did add those to the second read draft.
Thanks.
We do have a process that's formal just for the public. The process is that anything that's removed is struck through and anything that's new or added is bold. But between first and second read, if we do red, then you know it's changed from the first to second read.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea, but I just wanted the community to know that whenever we bring a policy for first read, there is a clearly planned and adhered to process just because with the number of policies that we're reviewing this year, we're keeping it tight, right? Keeping it very consistent.
It's getting pretty good at it though.
We are getting good at it, yeah.
Okay. Excellent since student achievement?
Excellence in student achievement. We met on Monday night and we had a really great meeting, there was, we covered quite a bit actually. So the, we talked about the, we haven't yet received the performance data on PACE and the New Hampshire statewide assessment. We're looking forward to receiving that. Education hasn't released that to us yet. That should be reported on at a future meeting. So we talked about, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Levitt reported about the efforts that are underway in assessing the AP program and also the possibility of offering a pathway toward an associate's degree. Those are the two, those are two of the goals that our committee adopted for the year to look at those two items. The challenge for AP would be to maintain rigor in the face of decreasing enrollment in the, in those courses as students are increasingly favoring dual enrollment classes. One possibility might be to alternate years where certain classes are offered, that's still being looked at. Relative to associate degree possibilities, there was some discussion regarding a program that Northern Essex Community College offers, it's called the Early College Program. This could include, which was really exciting, an option for students to be transported to their campus. And that would help to expand some of the opportunities for students over our current Neco offerings. Mr. Ambrose also noted that experiencing a college campus as a high school student could significantly assist students with their transition as they transition to college, especially first generation students. We're going to have more information reported to us, to our committee over the next couple meetings and I do encourage people to attend. It's really interesting information that we're getting. Mr. McCluskey reported about student exhibitions at various grade levels, which helps students exercise the skills that would ultimately be needed for a capstone defensive learning experience prior to graduating, which is something that we're looking at for seniors over the next several years. At the elementary level, students are practicing these skills through student-led conferences, usually in a presentation to a parent. Middle school science students will engage in specific hands-on projects in sixth and seventh grade, which will then be exhibited. And in high school, the ELO and internship program encompasses this naturally through a presentation requirement at the completion of the program. Mr. Ambrose suggested setting a benchmark goal of some scaled-down versions of this defensive learning, possibly in fifth and eighth grades. Dr. Haynes and Ms. Levitt emphasized the importance of progression, repetition, and consistency in the rubrics for evaluation for maximum success with that. Ms. Levitt reported on strategies for increasing the number of students meeting the definition of success. Dual enrollment and internship participation continues to increase. Approximately half of the, this year's graduating class participated in what's called I Applied Day where students apply to colleges, so about half the class has applied to colleges. And those, the remaining students have conference with guidance regarding their post-graduation plans, so 100% of seniors have communicated their plans to the guidance office. The high school administration also continues to promote the importance of the 11th grade SAT testing to the students. So our, our next meeting is on December 19th at 4:30. And again, I do encourage the public to attend.
Facilities?
Neither facilities or finance have met since our 29th school board meeting, our November 29th school board meeting.
Do you have a scheduled meeting?
We have a meeting for finance coming up next week, I believe it's Wednesday.
That's the, I'm sorry, that's the finance.
Right.
Okay.
Nothing for facilities.
I have January 9th for facilities.
No, that can't be right, today's the 5th.
Alright, that could be.
January.
Oh, January 9th, thank you. I'm in December and that'd be, that'd be Sunday, okay.
I think finance one should be a little later. Is it next week?
I have it on the 12th, in my calendar.
It's amazing how far into December we already are folks, it just, it feels like.
Finance was the 12th, right?
Yes.
Public relations?
Public relations also meets next Wednesday at 5:30.
Personnel?
No updates since our prior meeting.
No updates since our.
Okay, thank you, that was a little mumbled, I missed it. SST Cory?
Our next scheduled meeting, Mr. Ambrose, is when? December?
Monday, December?
December 17th?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong month. December?
17.
Six, no?
16, December 16th.
It is the 16th, yes.
And that'll be the budget discussion as everyone we alerted to last week during our prior board meeting.
Yes.
Seminary, anything other than what we'll be discussing? And budget?
Budget, we had a meeting last week on Thursday. And we will also have our first real meeting tomorrow at 7 o'clock right here in this room.
When you say real meeting, I'm not sure if Mrs. Cory likes that term.
Well, we will have our budget meeting, which we will start going over the budget discussing.
Okay.
That's our real meeting.
So all the other meetings were real meetings, so.
No, they were all just practice sessions. Thank you, Andy.
Adam, how you doing?
Good, good.
How's school?
It's going good, it's going good.
Grades are up?
Oh yeah, always. So I have nothing new to report from each grade, but the 12th Days of Caring started the other day. We're getting a good amount of donations coming in, it's being advertised throughout the community and the school pretty regularly. The sophomore class is going to be heading up a tacky sweater day, kind of like what they did with the costume day, there's going to be a raffle of prizes. And that's going to be on December 20th. And winter carnival, we had a cool idea actually, that is just an idea right now, we need to work out some logistics, but what we want to do is put a teacher lip sync somewhere in there to get the teachers more involved, the students more involved. But like I said, it's just an idea right now, we need to get more logistics, more logistics worked out.
I think it'd be good for the administrators.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to play air guitar.
I think it'd be fun, yeah.
That'd be cool.
I think it'd be fun.
Did you ever see him play the bass fiddle?
I think we could also have, we could also have board members.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm very shy, I don't know if I'd be able to run a beat. Did you ever see him play the bass fiddle?
I think I have, last year at the chorus concert, right?
I did.
Yes, yes I have.
Alright, so much for that. Old business, I have none, anybody can think of any? Public comment. Now please, if you're going to comment, just to let you know the rule, you have three minutes and that's okay, I'll try to hold you to that. And please stay only on what's the agenda, there will be a second public comment after the budget discussion and the seminary discussion, but if anybody has something they'd like to discuss now, we're open to it.
Hi, Andy Collier, Newton. I just wanted to say that in response to what Tammy was saying about the EISA and the other subcommittee meetings, a lot of work goes on in those. And I like to go and to, to see them and just, you know, I would like to echo that to her, there's some, on the EISA, there's some incredibly exciting things happening and you guys are really spearheading it and the administration's working very closely with you on some really exciting options for the kids. And I just wanted to echo how much I enjoyed your meeting and the work that you're doing. Thank you.
This is our first time doing this, folks.
I think you've got another one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, Tammy Gluck from Newton, I just want to do a public service announcement for the, Drama Club has their holiday show on Monday evening at 6 o'clock. It's a student-written, directed, all put on production, so cookie decorating for all ages at 6, show begins at 7. And I believe there's some band chorus concerts coming up too over the next two weeks. I think Tuesday night is the high school, middle school, Thursday night is I think the elementary school, and then the chorus concert is the following Tuesday. So people who are interested in seeing what the arts are like here at Sanborn should come out to support those.
We'll, we'll send out an extra constant contact with an update of the holiday festivities tomorrow.
Awesome.
So that way 3,000 parents will get a constant contact with just a little note saying, these are some really cool things going on.
And it's also great for the community to, maybe if you put in that, put in the, I know the Drama Club's collecting donations for, I think, homeless, maybe you can get a list of that. And also the Todd Days of Caring, so people can drop those off.
If you want to email me anything you'd like listed, I'd be happy to send that out because I think it's really important for folks to know.
Adam can get you.
Yeah, sounds great, yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Thank you.
Citizen of the town, should we let him speak anyway?
I think you have to, it's a public meeting.
I'm not technically a member of the public, but I challenge one of you guys to try to stop me from talking. I did ask Mr. Ambrose.
It does take four minutes for the police to arrive, Mr. Turner, so we're, we're.
I only need, I need one minute. So the Board is aware that this is in all likelihood my last school board meeting in the Sanborn Regional School.
And your contract's done on the, you've resigned as of the 31st, so I can technically ask you to be here on the 19th.
And I would come.
I'm not sure I'll do that.
But I just wanted to take a moment to say that in a few short weeks, I'll be off to a new position with the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation where I will take much of what I've learned here in the Sanborn Regional School District to try to help students and families across the state to improve their lives through education. I want to thank the Board for all of the opportunities that you've given me, for the tremendous friendships that I've developed here with amazing students, amazing staff members, and my administrative friends who will be my friends for the rest of my life. I want to thank the Board for everything that you've done for me and for the opportunities you've given me. Thank you.
Mike, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. And the reason I'm going to do that is because it has come to me, as many people know me in this town, that you are leaving because you're unhappy here. Now, Mike and I have had a number of conversations for some time, but he, a number of people come to me and say, well, he's leaving because he's unhappy here. I know that's not true, not to put you on the spot, Mike, but I know the opportunity that you're going to is a very, very good opportunity. But I want to put, I want to lie, anybody who thinks that Mike's leaving because he's unhappy here, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, but you and I have talked.
At all.
You and I have talked a number of times about this, but I have had a number of people come to me and say, well, he's leaving because he's unhappy here.
So you've heard.
Where are you going, Mike? What you going to do?
So you've heard me speak on a number of occasions about the public's perception of our school district. And you need to understand that folks outside of the community look at our school district as a gem. And I know we're not perfect, we have to improve a lot of things as any organization would have to do. But folks from the outside look at what we are doing in this district with amazing interest. And they look at what we're doing around career opportunities, supporting internships, extended learning opportunities, early college experiences. They look at what we're doing, building a competency-based education system, they look at the connections we're making with our district to business leaders in Plastow and all surrounding areas with the PACE organization. And they want to know, quite frankly, how they can do this on a statewide level. So this position that I'm going to, I have an opportunity for this position solely because of the good work that we're, we're doing here. And there are folks at the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation who have pledged $100 million over the course of the next 10 years to improve the quality of life in New Hampshire on four different fronts, around early childhood education, the opioid epidemic, college and career initiatives, and there's one more that I'm forgetting. I have been, I have been given this opportunity because of my experience that I've developed here. I'm not leaving because I'm unhappy, I'm leaving because I want to take what we've developed in this little corner of New Hampshire and help kids across the state.
Thank you.
Does that, does your new position give us an in-side track to some of that money?
We're going to find out, Jim.
He's already a politician.
Great question.
I already asked him that question.
We have his phone on speed dial. Anyway, okay, I do want to start the meeting at 7 and we are early, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to skip ahead to the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 19th at 6 to 9 in the library of the Sanborn Regional High School. And the next budget committee meeting will be held Thursday, that's tomorrow, December 6th, at 7:00 PM in the library of Sanborn Regional High School.
We could start the budget conversation for 30 minutes.
Or do we want to do the non-public?
That's what I'm wondering.
Can we do some non-public work?
Well, you can tell you were a chairman on any, what, about eight different committees? Great idea. Could you ladies and gentlemen give us about a half hour?
Wait, and Jim is trying to get a word in edgewise over here.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't think we should break up the budget conversation.
No, no, I agree, but no, non-public.
Oh, okay, yeah. Were there resignations and nominations now?
I think I went over that.
No resignations, no nominations.
I thought I said, yeah, none, none.
I didn't hear you say that.
Well, see, ours is, mine's a little different than yours. So I have a little minutes and notes from, from fellas there.
Well, get with the program.
I did say, didn't I say it?
I'd like to.
Okay, we need a motion to go into non-public.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into non-public slash RSA 91-A colon 3, 2, C and D, that's Charlie and Delta.
Second.
Just waiting for Phyllis to finish writing. Okay, okay, roll call, yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, Cory?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, okay. If you give us a few minutes? Okay, let the whole meeting back to order. Next order of business is, public hearing regarding the seminary property with task force members. And that's Tom, and Ellie I believe may have something to say?
Yep.
And Larry may have something to say?
And possibly.
Okay, well, you went like that, I thought you did.
So.
Turn it over to Tom.
Yeah, I got it. Check 1, 2.
Before we do that, there's a few extra chairs up here if anyone wants them. If any of you want a chair, there's a few up here, you come up and get them.
Yeah, come, if you need a chair, let us know.
It's not, it's okay.
We've got chairs here.
We've got a few extra chairs.
A lot of chairs.
Alright, so I'll stand here for a second just because it's nicer to be a little closer. We, we have had a lot of meetings regarding the Sanborn Seminary Building in the 16 months that I've been here. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Tom Ambrose, the Superintendent of Schools, and I just wanted to share that, can you all hear me okay? Okay, so the conversation started out pretty much right when I got here because the, the process of having, what essentially occurred was that a few years ago, there was a warrant that enabled the school district to engage in a conversation with the Town of Kingston regarding the potential sale of the seminary property to the Town of Kingston. When I arrived here, those negotiations include all the property attached to the seminary building. So that includes the seminary building, all the sports fields, the Swayze Gym, the Science Building, everything in that area was to be discussed. We had a lot of conversations and one of the concerns that came up, that's always important for school districts and communities, is land. Because as you all know, folks in New Hampshire don't really like to let go of land, partly because it's hard to come by. And there aren't very many big plots of land in this area. And as you know, we are facing declining enrollments currently, but there's always, you always wonder what the future might hold and we can't, we don't have a crystal ball. So we came, through negotiations, we came to the conclusion that it might be worth exploring, purchasing, or, or doing a land swap. So the essence of the land swap was that the Town of Kingston would assume control of the. of the, or ownership of the seminary property, and the folks at the school district would receive a large portion of land at the fairgrounds. So at the time that we came to the conclusion that that would probably be good for both parties, because folks have to remember that there's a significant cost to maintaining the seminary building, we've been heating it and trying to keep it in its current condition at a cost of about $60,000 a year, plus or minus, depending on the year. I think it's important to note that that's, you know, we have a lot of budgetary needs, and that's quite a bit of money for a school district to spend on something that we aren't using to help students learn. And so we've been really trying to figure out how to move this forward because the building is beautiful, and we want the town of Kingston to maintain the integrity of that property should they choose to use it in the future. But the district also recognizes that there needs to be, you know, it's owned by two communities. So currently, the seminary property is owned by the school district, which clearly is Newton and Kingston. So we came to the conclusion that swapping for the land at the fairgrounds would be a great idea. At the time that we came to that conclusion, we were under the impression that the land at the fairground was definitely buildable. Well, it has come to light in the last five days or so, I met with the selectmen on Monday night and members of the Kingston group, and we just talked, and we just, honestly, we just need some more time because there's some questions about aquifer and access to water on the, on the parcel of land that the town of Kingston wanted to give to the school district. And there's also a question about future buildability. It's pretty clear that that land would be buildable for athletic fields, but it's not clear, should the district ever need to build a facility on it, whether or not it could sustain the necessary requirements for septic and water. So in light of those very recent discoveries, we spoke on Monday and decided that we feel that we should give this one more year to talk about it. Because it really, we have to make sure, the school district needs to be sure that the land is buildable. And we also need to, I just feel like doing a really good job sometimes is more important than getting something done. And I think the selectmen agreed, as did the folks on the committee for the Kingston side. So the purpose of tonight, at this point, is to let you all know that we're going to, we're not moving to put this on warrant for this year, but we're still moving forward with the process. So the structure for this meeting is that we're going to give everyone three minutes who would like to speak. All members, could the members of the Kingston committee raise their hands, please? You have Lynn Ganty, George Korn, and Ellie, right? And Tammy Gluck's from Newton, but she's kind of an at-large community member involved.
She represents the parents.
Thank you, she represents the parents.
And both towns.
And then, and then myself, and Pam Brown, and Larry have been on the school board side.
And Corey.
And Corey, I'm sorry, Corey.
No problem.
Okay, so those are the folks that have been involved in the negotiations. And what we discussed for tonight was that we would like to hear from you what your questions and concerns are, so that as we continue our work over the next four or five months, we can answer those questions and concerns and try to come to an agreement that would bring the process of this hard work to fruition. Can't tell you exactly what the future's going to hold in terms of a crystal ball, but we felt like we couldn't keep it under wraps any longer. We wanted to be public about the fact that we were looking at a swap because we felt like we needed to start getting some pretty public information together. So i.e., people down at the fairgrounds digging with backhoes and doing samples and, if we don't tell people what's going on, they're going to draw their own conclusions. So our feeling was just be right up front, we're looking at a land swap, but the deal is not inked yet, it's not dry, we're still working through the process, so community input is critical. So what I'll do is I'll just sit back down, and Chair Broderick will just kind of guide folks to make sure that we don't get astray in terms of the three-minute requirement. And we would, due to the budget deliberations, we'd like to try to wrap this up by 7:50 if possible. So thank you very much for being here this evening. At this point, I'll turn the podium over to you, provided that, Ellie, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
Just a couple things.
Okay.
I want to stress that the opportunity of swapping the Kingston fairgrounds for the seminary property is not out of the woods yet. I mean, it's not out of, it's still an option. I guess that's what I want to say, it's still an option. What we didn't realize, we had one person say that the land was no problem buildable, and yet when we talked with Paul Nichols, who was the surveyor and did the original survey in 2000, there was a lot of gravel removed from the property. There are new constraints in terms of the septic system and how much natural soil needs to be on top of before you start digging under, and that was a concern. And so Tom Ambrose contacted the architect here, and he said, ah, no problem, you've got money, you can fix anything. So, and that wasn't really the answer we wanted to hear, but he said basically, oh yeah, we can probably balderan mist anything unless there's a vernal pool. And those of you that do know, invernal pools are those natural things that cannot be touched at all in any piece of property in New Hampshire, as far as I know, it's just New Hampshire, but I don't know. Anyways, but it opened up some concerns because we can't get it surveyed right now, we can't do the test pits right now, we're running out of time because we don't have the people that could do this, don't have the time to do it now because they're trying to wrap up all these other projects before the snow flies. So rather than try to rush it through, we went public anyways, we need your input. We do have tonight some copies of the appraisals. We do not have enough copies for every one year, and I ask that you share them. They're quite lengthy. We had, the first appraisal came in at 1.8 million dollars. That's before remediation of the seminary property, of the building itself. The other came in a little over 800,000. And we had two done, so that you'd have two different appraisers. One was definitely more intense than the other one, more detailed, but it gives a good description. Again, I do not, please do not take one for everyone, so we will not have enough copies. And please share.
The seminary campus appraisal.
The seminary campus, that we still need to have an appraisal done of the fairgrounds property, that came in, Kingston was recently surveyed, and that came in at 272,000 dollars, as is. There's nothing on the, there's no buildings. But the Sanborn property, there are buildings, and both surveys haven't broken down, but the mitigation costs for the seminary building are huge. We're looking at 2.5 to 3 million dollars. It's a lot, and more. Because we don't, as you know, once you start fixing up property like that, it's going to run into more money than you really have, or you think you have. So there were a lot of issues, which is why the land swap seemed like the right way to go. Because even though my friends in Newton might say, well, what's in it for Newton? And I object, Kozak, you sent me that question, and I thank you for that. And my first reaction was a little bit glib, I'll be honest with you, in saying, you get out from under the seminary property. And that's not really a glib statement because, you know, Mr. Ambrose said it costs us $60,000 to heat it, but it's more than the $60,000 because you're still maintaining the grounds around there, you're still snow plowing it, you're still trimming trees around there. Thank you. All that comes into play. So there's more than $60,000, that's just to heat the building. But, and if, and if Kingston were to offer a sum of money, let's say that was the committee, the task force decided on a sum of money, that money doesn't come back to Newton or to Kingston, it goes back to the district. So Kingston has a unique situation because we want to buy it. Excuse me, did you have some questions? Kingston wants to buy it, but it's also half owner anyways. Very unusual situation that we're in. But in order for Kingston to control the destiny, and that's really what it boils down to, of the future, the center of the town, we have to own the property. It's the best way to do it. It's the only way, but it's the best way. But if you guys can come up with some ideas, we welcome that. Lynn was also in the task force with me. Lynn Ganty.
Hi, I'm Lynn Ganty. I just want to give you a little update about why we decided to move it off for a year also. Ellie alluded to the surveyors weren't available. So if they're not available until the spring, we didn't want to rush into anything. So we want to have a survey done of the fairgrounds, so we have more information. We want to do a soil sample. We want to make sure that the property might be viable if the school district would want to build on it in the future. There are a lot of questions about the accessibility to the water. So along with the survey, also gives us information back about how much usable land do we need to have if we're going to put a water source there? So we don't want to, it's 55 acres, right?
Is this the fairgrounds? It's a little bit more than that, yeah.
Just a little over 55 acres. So if we need five acres for the land, you know, to have the water accessibility, we want to know about that. We want to have all of that type of information. There are also leases back to the school to use the gym, to use the fields, where Vicki is responsible for scheduling, the use of those types of things. We want to look at, is it a property that we want to keep and build, like maybe through the Heritage Commission helping us, you know, who Deb powers chairs? Or is it a property that maybe we want to sell to a developer? So there's a lot of things that we still have to find out, and we have to ink out a purchase and sale agreement so we can at least discuss what those, what all of those intricate details might be. I hope that helps.
So now invite people for public comment.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, do we have any public comment? Any questions? Okay, okay, here's, there we go. Yeah. If you would, just make it easier for me, if, ma'am, if you could go to the podium and anybody else who wants to speak, like we do at the deliberative session, kind of stand off to the left so I'll, I don't want to not recognize you. So if there's anybody else, you could like sound a little line because she's only going to speak in three minutes.
Okay, Peter.
Then we'll know, I don't want to miss anybody because I miss your hand or something.
Hi, I'm Karen Lovering, I'm a resident of Kingston. Couple quick questions for you. I heard the terms portion of the land at the fairgrounds. So are we looking to swap all of that 55 acres or just a portion of it? And while I know we have no crystal ball, I'm sure you've got some thoughts about what you'd like to build if it is a buildable lot. And I'd just like to hear what, what some of your thoughts are, what you'd like to build there if it is a buildable lot.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that. You build a lot for the fairgrounds?
The fairgrounds, yeah.
The fairground has a little bit over 50 some odd acres, and half of it we know is really wetlands. And half of it is probably what we think is buildable. It's definitely buildable for more fields. There's no, in fact, Kingston itself had looked at putting more fields on that section of the property, the north half. It's divided in the middle horizontally by Green Road, which is a right-of-way, basically, but it's a road, and the northern half of Butts and Hannigan's Lane, the southern half of Butts, Route 125. And we, what we really don't, and the well, the access to the aquifer is to the far right. So if this were the property, the well is over here, 125 is down here, and the road cuts in between. So is it buildable? We'd like to think it is. Oh, thank you. But we don't know for sure, and that, they're going to have to do some soil test pits to determine where, how the septic system could go in. That would be the biggest key for development. Now, would it be different for schools versus private development? It's not to say that, were the land deeded to the school district? The school district could turn around and sell it, but we'll have more information on whether it was buildable or not, or to what extent, once a survey is done and soil samples are taken. Now, this also costs money, and that's another reason why we wanted your input. Right now, the town of Kingston and the school district have shared the cost of the two appraisals. And we've had a few other things where it's been, we're sharing the cost. That means Kingston's picking up a little more of the bite because we have, we own half the district. So, I'm just letting you know, we're not, we're not trying to be cheap about this. We're trying to be fair, and we want a fair agreement that's fair to the district and to the town and to Newton. Because Newton's our partner in the district, so you, we don't, it's our neighbors, and we've been together for 50 years or close to it. So we'd like to make it amicable and a win-win situation for both sides. Another reason we want your input. You know, I don't think we jumped the gun by coming to you now when we thought we might have had a deal, but as we dug deeper it to get more information to present to you, we ran into roadblocks. And I, we all agreed as a team, as a task force, better to be transparent right up front with you because down the road, we're going to come and ask you for the deal. And when we ask for the deal, we want you to support us. Hope that answered your question.
Still curious about what types of potential building.
It could either go residential or, I mean, or the school. At this point, that's what we're.
Are you thinking of potentially a middle school? I know that's been.
Oh, the school, you mean? Oh, I don't.
What types of buildings, so you're just, if it is a buildable lot, do you have some things that you're thinking about potentially building?
I'll talk to that.
In 20 years, we might have some.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that thoughtful question. I think it's important to note that there's no intention at this time to build any kind of facility anywhere. The original agreement had some criteria in it, and the first one was that things would kind of stay status quo for 10 years with an option to continue to use the fields that are on the seminary property for five-year blocks after that, up to 20 years. My point was just that land is hard to find, and you can never see the future with the crystal ball, so having a piece of land that could be utilized by the school district in the future for whatever the needs may be would be good. And it was important to the district that the land be buildable in the event that we had to build something in the future. There's no plans whatsoever in any way to build anything at all at this time. I just don't think that, I think that the board team, tell me if I'm wrong, but we felt that it was important that the land was buildable in the event that something occurred that was unforeseen. Because we're basically giving up buildable land, right? So the only reason why we wanted to verify the buildability was because we're giving up buildable land, so we were trying to make sure that we were giving up something for something that was the same. So it was more of an equal, equal swap. Okay, yep.
Hi, Annie Collier, Newton. I have a number of questions that will need to get resolved in the future. First of all, the fact that we're spending $60,000 to heat a building which is of no use whatsoever to the district, basically, to me, that sounds like the district is spending money to preserve a building which is a potential benefit to Kingston. And I question whether that's the best use of district money when what we're supposed to be doing is concentrating on educating the children. So I think it might be nice for Kingston to consider, if they want that heated, to consider adding the heating bill to their, to their budget because, you know, their aim is to have it in the future. The second thing that I have as a concern is we have developed fields and field houses and gym and various items and structures and underground sprinkler systems and all kinds of stuff that's already there. And if we were to swap in 10 years, both Newton and Kingston would have the responsibility of investing to put all that stuff in a new, in a new facility. And I just don't get the reason for that. I don't get why that makes sense for the district. So I'm going to have to have a lot of information and really be persuaded. I have an open mind, but right now, I'm not seeing anything in it for the district. So, thank you.
Well, I'm going to try and answer as well as I can, Annie. Yes, it does cost $60,000 to heat the building, but Kingston still pays half that. It's not just a one-way street in that. And you've got to remember, well, maybe you weren't here, I don't know. In the 80s, those of you that were here, and I know many of you in this room were, we contributed $150,000 a year for four years to upgrade the exterior of that building. That's a lot of tax money that went into preserving that building. The exterior looks fabulous. It wasn't done to make Kingston look good, it was done to make the Sanborn Seminary look good. And it's on the National Historic Register. You're not going to get pushed back, no, you'll get pushed back from me, but there's going to be a lot of people, not just in the Sanborn District, but in surrounding communities, that if we let that main building grow, fallow, and just crumble to the ground, there's going to be repercussions. School district has a responsibility to maintain that building unless it, and it's nothing to say the school can't turn around and sell the whole property on its own and have nothing to do, bypass Kingston. That's, that's out to the school district, but the school district is not in the real estate business, which was why the task force was formed in order to take on that responsibility and move it forward. I can't reiterate or not, we're not, Kingston doesn't want to. I, I can't reiterate or not, we're not, Kingston doesn't want to screw its partner. It's not the intent. But it's in the middle of our town, and it's looking like crap. And we want to do something about it. We had a charrette done two years ago, almost three, I think, at this point. And it talked about how can we generate revenue for our schools? And we all face this problem, is, is the two towns, because we live in rural communities. We don't have a big tax base. And unless we bring companies in or businesses in that's going to generate taxes, our property tax bills will continue to grow. So Kingston was looking at, well, what are we going to do as a community to kind of broaden that base? And, and what the charrette decided, that weekend process, and some of you participated, we invited school people to come, was that Kingston should be made a destination place, like Wolfboro. It's going to take at least twenty, twenty-five years to do that. We have six walking trails so far, at least six. We have a one-mile circumference common in the center of town. We could put bike paths around and go around the seminary property, to really develop it. We could develop, establish Friends of Kingston Lake, start renting canoes and kayaks and God knows what else in that awful white building at the end of the plains there that should be used for commercial purposes so we can generate some revenue, get some more people going to the lake and broaden the use of the town. We've already changed some of our zoning laws so that some of the bigger homes on the plains could become a bed and breakfast. And the Josiah Potlet House, for example, would be, would be one prime example of that. So there's a vision there. And the vision means that we need to be able to use this land. If the school district wants to go into real estate, that's its business. It's choice to do that and then sell it. And then town of Kingston will bid like anybody else. But don't think that you're going to get away with, it's not going to be an easy deal. The fire suppression system, there is a fire suppression system there that's put in by the town of Kingston. It's not just the school district that uses it. The wells, no matter what, it goes in there, the wells are going to have to be reestablished. It may not be that simple that what is there now is going to work. We have a swimming pond in the front of the old tennis courts. That drainage system has to be addressed. So the property has inherent challenges regardless. It's not as simple as saving sixty thousand dollars a year heating it. It's not that simple.
I, could I just say one quick thing before you speak, sir? Which please feel free to stand at the podium. I just wanted to mention to, sure. Sure, just, just let me, let me just say one quick thing.
That's why I wanted, yeah.
Yeah, folks could line up who want to speak. That would be great. But I just wanted to mention this quick, quick point. I've struggled with the amount of money that it costs to maintain the seminary building, because we have kids who have needs. But if we don't maintain the building, then if, if we don't sell it to, or work out a deal with Kingston, and then we want to sell it later, it will hurt the value if it's not maintained. And I'm trying to figure out the logistics of whether or not it's worth continuing to heat the building. And that's something that the board will need to discuss soon, because it's getting cold out. And it did have some issues last year where the board did not, I mean, where the, where the, the building was not heated due to some damage. So I want to let everyone know that we're looking at the fiscal components very carefully. But it's really important to me that we maintain the value of the building until such time as it is sold. And I'm trying to figure out the balance of that. So what I decided is I'm, I'm not qualified to figure out the balance of that, because it's a, a very technical process. So Mr. Riley has been working on it, and he will be advising the board soon about that issue. And then the board will have to make a decision about whether or not to continue heating the property. So that, I just wanted to address that. You know, that it's a really hard balance to strike, keeping it, keeping it nice versus paying for it.
Thank you, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. I have, I think, four questions. One is, what does Kingston plan to do with the seminary building? Has that been discussed by the townspeople of Kingston and the selectmen? Also, the other buildings. You mentioned that the gym and Chase Field might be leased to the school. But those facilities are also used by community organizations. I happen to be on the board of Sanborn Youth Soccer, and the district has very graciously allowed us to use those facilities. So I'm wondering what might happen to the status of communities, Kingston and Newton also, that might want to use those facilities. Another question I have is, I was not involved on the charrette committee, but I was on one of the focus groups and was very excited about what the prospects might be for Kingston. But after that date, I heard nothing else about it. So again, I'm wondering, that was a great vision, but where is that vision right now? Has the town of Kingston, have the voters embraced that vision and said in some way that they would like to put efforts and money towards seeing that vision come to fruition?
You don't have to respond.
I have duplicates, so I'll pass them.
I can make it real quick if you'd like.
Sure, sure, it's up to you.
I think the first question was, what do we plan to do with the seminary building? Well, the "we" has not been decided anything with the seminary building. That, until we own the property, "we" is the town, no, no plans have been made. I mean, there's been all kinds of speculation, whether it would be municipal offices, an artist collective like the Button Factory in Portsmouth, or condos. All kinds of things have come up. But have anything happened? No. But the, but the vision has not died. The vision has been implemented, and you really should get involved with the Heritage Commission, because they're keeping that vision alive for us on many levels. And one of it was changing the zoning so that it allowed the ability for Bed and Breakfast to locate on the plains. That was one piece. We see the obtaining ownership of the seminary property as a second piece. Now, Kingston has to vote for it, to, to purchase it and/or acquire it, whether it's a land swap or money. And the school district has to agree to sell it, whether it's for a land swap or for money. So there's still other hurdles to go through. Then you get into more of the vision. I mean, it's, it's a process. That's why I say it, to me, it's twenty years. As far as using, leasing back the gym and the fields, we, we expect that the, the groups that are using the fields and the gym now will continue to do so, whether it's the youth soccer, Kingston for voting purposes, the Suzy Gym. We felt that, we want, we felt the property needed to stay together, but not that we should take everything away from the school. The school needs a gym, it needs the Chase Fields, and they may need more fields. And we also said that Kingston would let the school use Magnuson Fields and Como Fields if they needed. But the priority was to be given to the groups and organizations that currently use the fields, the baseball, soccer, and a few others. And I think that was it. As far as the vision, whether voters have embraced the vision or not, we won't know that until they start supporting us through the votes. If that happens, we don't know.
Hi, Paula Pelletier from Kingston. I was, my biggest question is whether or not the parties involved have considered and reviewed the King ordinance, the Kingston laws, regarding the protection of the aquifer and the wetlands in that area. Because I'm part of a group who's been working with the Department of Environmental Services. And we have some phone calls, and we're waiting some testing to be done regarding the dumping that's been going on at the fairgrounds. So I wonder if the parties involved have looked into the town ordinances and the protections that are provided within those ordinances.
Yeah, I'll just answer briefly that that's exactly why we put the brakes on. So we started looking into some things. The initial feedback that we got was that the land would be buildable. But then there were questions about those very issues and other things that you brought up. Particularly, the, the big question for me is if the town of Kingston would like to retain the option to use a, a portion of the property for the purpose of water, that the...
The well radius.
The well radius would be an issue? Could, could be an issue for, for school facilities?
Which well are you referring to?
Any, on that property, any, that people might want to put in. And then the other thing was, we were really concerned about the possibility of the septic system installation. And when we started to dig deeper and be more thorough, what occurred was that our initial information said that it probably would, you know, that things would be fine. When we started to dig a little deeper, we didn't feel as confident. Uh, no pun intended, sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
But we, we started to look for more information, and we felt that, I, I personally felt, feel good that we, it's always prudent to let everyone know what's going on and then slow it down versus go too fast and then regret it. So I feel really good that we're, we're making progress with this. But we have a lot to figure out over the next six months at this point.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes?
I was wondering, you said you're anticipating information about environmental...
Yes.
...concerns?
Yes.
Do you know where you'll be getting that?
I met my neighbors, a few of my neighbors, and I met with Eben Lewis from the Department of Environmental Services last Friday. I received an email from him on Monday saying that there was some, he had put forth paperwork to have it further into. And the last I knew is that there is a woman, her first name is Linda, I can't remember her last name, but she's going to be contacting us regarding the dumping of solid waste in that area.
Could you, could you get in touch with this committee and...
Absolutely.
And provide that information?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been meeting with the selectmen.
Yes, we would love that information. Thank you very much.
Robert Jeffroy, Kingston. Is, is there a way they can just, where the seminary building is, right? Sell off enough land with the building? And then split the profit between Newton and Kingston, and all, everything's settled? And then sell it to somebody who wants to make condos out of it or something?
That is a possibility that the board needs to, to deliberate.
That would solve all this, and then you could give enough land that people could park their cars and all that, and you'd still keep the basketball court and the fields and all that, because they've got nothing to do with it.
That is a legitimate...
It's the easiest way I can see.
Thank you very much.
And all the arguing doesn't have to go on, yeah?
Yep, that, that is a very real possibility. Thank you.
I'm Sue Jewitt from Kingston, New Hampshire, a taxpayer. And I'm wondering, I have a problem with the term "even swap", because an even swap would be land for land. This is land for land with a building. And if the town is planning on using that building, I think before they finalize this deal, they need to know the cost of doing something with that building. You know, to bring that up to ADA specifications, it's going to be a money pit or an open checkbook. And, you know, I don't have kids in school, but I was happy to build this building. And I was happy to build the library in town. I just don't say no. But there are too many unanswered questions with this. And I think if the Sanborn Regional School District needs to do something with that, that, you know, look into selling it to a developer that has deeper pockets than the taxpayers at Kingston. Because I just see, unless you have figures of, and more of just a vision to develop that, you know, there's a lot of unanswered things going on. The other thing is, has the district attempted to sell that yet? Or is this...
Thank you. There was a warrant article that, that prompted, prior to my arrival, that prompted the district to begin negotiations with Kingston. We have not put the property on the open market. And that, and that, your comments are, are part of why we slowed this down a little bit. So I really appreciate your feedback, and I think we all do. We're, this is great. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I think we have a gentleman waiting.
Good evening. Jim Ricker. I'm born and raised here in Kingston. My parents still maintain a home here, going on more than fifty-one years now. And graduated Sanborn in nineteen eighty-five. And of course, my homeroom was in the attic of the main building, as we called it back in the day. I think that's the very space that's now been sealed off for environmental reasons, but by day...
Actually, I've been up there. It's interesting. It's not sealed off, but it is interesting.
Okay. I don't think I've stepped foot in there since I graduated some thirty-something years ago. So by day, I work for Environmental Engineering and Site Civil Engineering Company. In my professional life, and I know this is premature, I don't know, the, the town hasn't even taken over the building yet. But obviously, the, the people are concerned about that building. It's historically significant. It means a lot to a lot of us, especially those of us who, you know, went to high school there. It's, so it may be premature, but I just want to float an idea out there. When the time is right, maybe it gains some traction. In my professional life, I have been affiliated with a business model for redeveloping properties. It's known as enhanced use lease. It's something that we used to use with blighted federal properties that were on a federal property. The federal government couldn't sell the property because, for, for tax purposes. They couldn't receive money because, for, for excise tax purposes. But they could receive in-kind services for this building. We had one in Texas at Fort CM Houston. It was called the Brooks Army Medical Facility. Beautiful, historically significant building, had asbestos, had a lot of environmental warts. What the, what the business model that we applied to that was that a, a group comes in. The federal government essentially turns the property over to this group. The group puts its own money and sweat equity into the building to renovate it, clean it up. You don't have to pay your sixty thousand dollar, your heating bill anymore. We kind of become the landlords for the space. We find tenants for it. We do the renovations. The town maintains ownership of the property, so you're not giving up something that's important to the town and to the community. And the way we would get our money back out of it is by collecting rents over what could be a long term. Could be a fifty-year term. And it all depends on what, you know, the, the level of remediation that might go into the building, the amount of upkeep, if you have to do make it ADA compliant. It's, it's something I think could be successful, provided that the financial metrics work out. Again, I know it's premature, and we're not even, we haven't even, the town isn't even taking over property yet. But a developer might not be, it might be so upside down that a developer might not be able to come in and buy it and do all the renovations. That's why this model is successful, because they don't, a company like mine could come in and do the, we could do the abatement as part of our investment in the property. So at the end of that thirty, forty, fifty-year term, whatever it is, the town gets the building back. It's still yours, but it's been upgraded, and it hasn't cost you X thousands of dollars year by year by year.
Could you call me so that we could meet and talk? I like this guy.
I know his father.
Oh, okay. Yes, we would like to talk with you sincerely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I was planning on doing ten minutes, but I tried to cram that into three.
No, you're, you're one minute over, but that's okay.
You just earned yourself a spot on a committee, sir.
Good enough, I'll be in touch. I have cards.
All right, thank you very much. If there's anyone else, yeah, come on up.
Well, I'm not going to be here in twenty years, but I just hate to see the seminary building destroyed. I graduated from the seminary in nineteen fifty-four, and it was the most beautiful building that I'd ever been in. And I went to school for eleven years in Swambskut, Massachusetts. But when I came up here and my dad bought property on Main Street, he was a teacher at Swambskut. And I told him, I said, "Dad, take me down to the seminary." And he did. And I said, "You know, I'm not going to go back to Swambskut High School. I'm going to graduate from Sanborn," of which I did. And we have had three children and three grandchildren that have graduated from Sanborn, not from the seminary. Once from the high school, and then I fought for the middle school, and I fought for the high school, this high school. And it came to fruition. But I look back on that high school at Sanborn Seminary. I saw the science building, the basketball court, and the Suzy Gymnasium, all built while we were here. And also, I've seen the manual arts department destroyed. I've seen the headmaster's house destroyed. I've seen the old home ec building destroyed. And yet, the seminary building still remains there. I went back to Swambskut High School... I went back to Swambskut High School just recently, the one I would have graduated from, and it had been destroyed. And what were they building there? Condos. Now, do we want condos to be in the center of our town? No. It's just to preserve whatever we have that's beautiful, that I would hate to see destroyed. And I know, being a taxpayer for over 60 years in Kingston, waterfront property, I know how taxes have increased. But it's the beauty of the town. We know its bedroom community. I served on the Sanborn School District, School Board as clerk for 13 years. And I have seen this town grow from 2,000 to over 8,000. I know that the school board today is a lot of young people, except for friend Ellie. Who served, who served as chairman of the school board while I was clerk of the school district. And I know that you are working very, very hard to preserve the seminary. And I just hope that all of you take this into mind when you start to make your decisions. Ball fields at the fairgrounds, wonderful. We used to have concerts at the fairgrounds. But I hope that it just stays as ball fields. Thank you.
I'd give her all night.
I don't really want to follow that.
I was going to say, yeah.
My name's Jeff Donahue. I'm not from here. I'm from up outside of Concord and Huffington. However, I work in redevelopment extensively. And I just want to applaud the board for spending the money to heat the building. I've worked on 70 different military bases around the country. I have seen buildings where the heat is shut off and in one year, the building is destroyed. And so, in my opinion, if you don't heat that building, the value won't be anywhere near what the appraisers said it was. Would be, it would be totally destroyed. So from the perspective of trying to get Jim's project, Jim actually told me about this, that's why I came down, to get his approach done, maintaining the value of the building is really critical. And so, you know, if, there's a way to, I know it's hard to spend it when, it's not educating students, but it is preserving your value in the project from a redevelopment.
Can you contact me at my office, please?
I'll give you a
Thank you.
You got a him, Jim?
I know, we're going to have a huge committee after tonight. This is awesome.
No question.
Go ahead.
You got time?
We're almost there. You're the last one.
No, we've got, we've got 12 minutes.
Hi, I'm Debbie Powers from Kingston. I'm also the chairman of the Kingston Heritage Commission. And I just wanted to address a couple of things that I've heard tonight about what is going to happen with that building. I think it was pretty clear that we don't know what's going to happen with the seminary land right now. But what we have promised when all of this, through the years, is that anything that happens, we're going to have public meetings that'll be open so people can give their ideas. And anything that happens in that building, with that property, is going to go to town warrant. The board of selectmen in Kingston have never once not told me that, and I totally agree with it. So first, we're getting the property, if we get the property, and then we take it to the next step. There's going to, there's a lot of time and effort that will be coming in because I've heard lovely ideas so far tonight, but we have to like sort through all of that. So one, first, we want to get the property. The second thing I want to say is that, yes, the school board could sell this to a developer, but they could just put up condos. If we, Kingston, who has a vested interest in the center of their town, succeeds in doing, as Ellie alluded to, an economic resurgence based on our new, you know, the identity we're looking for, that benefits Newton. Because there's, I'm sure all of you have read studies that's saying, you know, what happens in one community can spread out. So I think that Newton, besides losing the burden of carrying that school and that property, could also economically benefit in the future if Kingston gets the property and plans it well, rather than just selling it to a developer to put, you know, whatever they want up there. So we want to do it planned. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I do not see anyone standing in line. Maybe I have one working his way.
My name is Tom Winternitz. I live in Kingston. The building in question is a landmark. It was the best high school in New Hampshire at the time, when there was a need for a good New Hampshire school. I think that we could continue that tradition by making it a junior college. All the sewer and land and railings and pavement and problems that have been addressed are reasonably minor. The thing is that the students at the high school here don't have the next step that they need to get their education and that the school could be seated in that building. I'm not sure that it will be economic, that are understandable. I went to a college in 1972, started by Princeton University, called Thomas Alva Edison State College. We don't have any teachers. That's unusual. We have a lot of students, 50,000. And we're online, which is also unusual. We also have students in military vehicles worldwide. I think that the site would be a good site for the servers necessary to run such a junior college. I hesitate to say it's now a university, but it is a university for nurses at this time. It started in 72 as a two-year college. I think that your students in the high school need that next step to get into the workforce. I think that if you were to provide a online school through this building and using the building as a focal point, you could easily draw enough students and progress in a way that would make the historic heritage of Sanburton High School, now Sanburton Junior College. As far as the campus, yeah, you've got grass and you've got fields and you've got basketball courts and so on and so forth. So did we down in Trenton, in the center of city. We had a stage and played soccer. But the point is, I think the students in the high school here need that next step and this facility could become a focal point for such a facility. Pardon me for being lengthy and
You actually, you're 10 seconds over. Corey, I think you had something. Do you have a short moment to wrap this up?
Yeah, I mean, I feel bad following the last two conversations with what I was
He's been signaling for a minute.
I know that, but the general public doesn't know that we have, one of the board members is on remote access right now. So just, that's all, I just want you guys to know that there is another board member also served on the committee, who's in Texas on business and is remotely accessing
A lot of you weren't here at the beginning of the meeting at 6:00.
He was a member of the task force and would like to comment accordingly.
One of the things that challenges me, and again, I'm very happy to hear that the board and leadership team and the business administrator over the years has made sure that we've maintained the building and thus making it something that's obviously physically attractive moving forward and also possibly reusable. We have had our challenges with, you know, even getting mothballs in there and, you know, water breaks and break-ins. The thing that I hear and I question, and I don't know this, and I don't, for some reason, understand why I don't even know this, but how much have we as taxpayers paid to maintain the building since it was last used to educate students? How much are we going to then pay over the, in the future, again, when it's not educating students? So what's in our best interest?
He doesn't, Corey, I just wanted to mention that there was a handout that went out to everyone tonight and it had some of those figures on it. I will forward that handout to you. It's, um
483,698.
Yeah. For five years, it was 483,698. But I believe that total is for everything, including maintaining the grounds, the swayze gym.
Correct.
And I would assume that amount does not include the recent roof repair to the gym at the swayze, at the swayze gym, which was
Don't the first two years include the charter school? Wasn't the charter school there?
Thank you very much for bringing that up. It does include, the first two years on this projection for five years, does include approximately an additional $90,000 to $100,000 of money when we had a charter school at that facility. So that was a significantly higher cost than without the charter school.
Those numbers are also for the entire campus and all the facilities on that property there. There's a separate printout for just the old seminary building.
Yes, and the, the printout for that is on the document. So we'll, Corey, I'll forward that to you in just a moment. Oh, Michelle's sending it to you now.
Thank you.
And the, and the charter school gave us revenue, I think.
The charter school also, there was expensive, but there were also revenues for the charter school. So I just want to be clear that, that I did a lot of homework on this, this last couple of days at the request of some Budcom members and other people. And I just wanted to make sure everyone understands, on average, to maintain the seminary building, just the building, we're around $50,000 to $60,000. Now granted, with the freezing last winter, right? No, am I wrong? I'm right, yeah. Michelle, can you explain that to people? I think it's important.
Which, I'm sorry, the
For just the seminary
10,017, 18.
10,991 for last year.
Sounds, we get a lot of numbers going on here, so we're getting out of time also, so I think we need to wrap this up.
You can see the difference on the section that's titled seminary, that's for the seminary building. And the heating costs are in propane. And you can see in 17, 18 that the cost dropped. And that's because we had a freezing, an issue with freezing, and those sprinklers went off in that building, in that building. And so the heating was not maintained. There's a significant cost to repairing that.
So I just want to stand corrected because I want to make sure that the information is accurate to the public. Michelle, am I, am I correct that the total cost for the last five years for the seminary building was $45,271?
That's my understanding correct?
Okay. Thank you for, thank you, Annie, for your student number.
But that's, that's hard cost that we've paid accounts payable to, not including all the business administrators, Mr. Riley and all the other faculty members who've maintained that building and having to do this work. There's also additional costs there that are associated that are not factored into those lineups that you're describing right now.
These are direct, that's correct, Corey. These are direct costs that are attributed to overseeing that property. It does not factor in the facility director's time, things like that.
Right.
Your time. I see there's no one else and that's good because we wanted to finish at this time.
Yep.
This is a long way from done. There'll be more meetings, more public comments. This board, if I can speak for the board, you know, there's an old saying, you know, you can decide in haste and repent at leisure. We do not want to do that. So we will make sure you're, you're involved in it. So those of you who want to stay will be discussing the budget and those of you, we'll give you a minute or two to leave if you don't want to stay for the budget part. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You guys want a break while they walk out? We'll probably be faster than them walking out anyway. Next item on the agenda, am I correct? Next item on the agenda? Okay, I know you want to talk, but we, we'll put it, we'll put it on the, let me know if you want it on the agenda for another time.
No, I want to do it tonight. It's fine.
He would like to talk about, more about the seminary building, just him. But the public has left, so I think
No, I'm talking about in non-public.
Oh, in non-public, well, we'll talk about that then.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Budget discussion. Okay. You're up.
So I'll, I'll frame it just a little bit to get things going here for the folks who are still here. And thank you to everyone who's still here. So the process now is that the board needs to deliberate. What happens with the budget is the superintendent works with the administrative team and then I present the budget that we come up with together to the school board. And then the school board deliberates that budget and makes a decision about an amount to adopt that is then sent to the budget committee for review. The budget committee reviews that adopted budget and makes a recommendation. And our hope is to get to a point where the two budgets agree and then present those agreed-upon budgets to the deliberative, the first deliberative in early February. If we don't agree, then two separate budgets are presented, one by the budget committee and then the school board shares what they think the budget should be and the deliberative has to decide on a budget that will then go to the voters. Fair enough? So we're at the stage tonight where the school board will deliberate the recommended budget that I presented two weeks ago. And just to remind folks, the default budget has, has, what was the final, it was 470,000? It's okay. The default budget is about half of the addition that I made to the budget with the administrative team. And I just want to remind everyone that there was also a lengthy list of things that we did not include in the budget that were important, really important items. But until the organization of the district is concluded, we felt like we could live with it and move forward for another year to keep the increase more reasonable for the taxpayers. So we, we did try to keep the increase under 3%. And so at this point, the conversation is open to the board about amendments or questions for Michelle and I or the administrative team who is here, so that you can deliberate on a budget to send to the Budcom.
I would like to, if possible, if you're going to speak, speak, speak all you want, but I would rather have you speak and then not say, oh, wait a minute, now I've got another thing and, oh, wait a minute, I got another thing. So try to, try to put all your thoughts in one, if I can say it that way. Because we do have a tendency to, after Larry speaks, I speak and then you speak and then I say, oh, wait a minute, I've got another idea. I want to speak. So I, I'd like to keep this really to the point all the way through. Jim, what do you got?
I'd like, for the purposes of discussion, I'd like to make a motion or an amendment, I'm not sure how to phrase it, that we propose a 500,000 increase over this year's budget.
So, so what you're saying is, what you're saying is that you're making a motion?
Yeah.
You would have to amend the proposed budget down an amount.
That's what I'm, that's what I'll do then.
That's what I was going to say, Larry.
To what amount?
To 500,000 above this year's budget.
Do you have that number?
Uh, yeah, I do.
And that'd be, that'd be down from 36, so let me get my calculator.
Yes, from 36, 1,112,427.
Okay, so you're reducing it 500,000?
No, 400 and 490, yeah.
You want to reduce it by how much?
The difference between
I'm, I'm going to do the percentages is what I'm going to be looking for here, so I can do that.
Well, the difference between 36, 112, 427 and 35, 648, 006 Well, the difference between thirty-six, one twelve, four twenty-seven and thirty-five, six forty-eight, zero zero seven. It's, I believe it's one point four percent as opposed to two point seven nine or whatever.
Minus thirty-five, six forty-eight, zero seven. You're looking at thirty-two million? No.
Thirty-five million.
Six forty-eight.
Yep.
I'll second.
And that's a one point two percentage.
Uh, one four, point four, I think.
One point four.
So the proposed amount, Dr. Superintendent Ambrose, was thirty-six thousand, one, thirty-six million, one hundred twelve thousand, four hundred twenty-seven, correct?
Yes.
Can I continue having the floor, Chairman?
Peter, can, Peter, can Corey keep talking?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, we've got a second on it now, discussion, sorry, we're, we're ready to...
Right, yeah, 'cause I, I'm...
Corey, you're up, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm doing calculations, I shouldn't be, but...
Uh, it's okay, um, I'm gonna have to say I'm not in favor of that because last week we heard over eight, near eighty questions in which there was less than ten that were student-focused, asked by the budget and school committee. As a parent guardian, multiple children that attend our school district and also someone who works with other districts nationwide, I'm concerned that we focus on... We were focusing on the wrong areas in the budget process, which has turned out to be, actually now with your proposal, Jim, out to be like many years prior. I say this knowing that we are fiduciary agents, I recognize that. I know that we have a backup set above eyes who are also elected, the budget committee who are fiduciary agents too. That being said, really concerns me that over the years, and I just heard Superintendent Ambrose say this too, over the years and including our budget meeting last week, what can we live without? We need to analyze the line items, we have to be concerned about this as a negotiating year, and what is more reasonable? Like you just said the word reasonable, I'm not overly happy when I hear that. Because speaking about those line items, they're not directly, you know, speaking about those line items are not directly impacting education that we talked about last week. I've heard from parent guardians since last week who are currently in our, of, parent guardians of students who are currently in our schools. And they express, is this really what the board thinks that we're questioning? And they ask questions about the trucks, et cetera. I personally challenge as an individual, as a board member, because when I suggested we develop an understanding of what success means to community standborn, nowhere was there concerns about snow blowers or being reasonable. I for one just expect the grounds to be cleaned and to, well, want to be, I do not want to hamper that process. So if Steve, the facility director, Steve Riley, goes ahead and says, we need a snow blower because this one's been around for so long, let's just replace the damn thing. To me, for safety's sake, we have thousands of parents and guardians and students who are running on these roads, these pathways, the, the walkways on a daily basis, thousands. Furthermore, we heard last week that our staffing is being paid in the middle yet once again. I've heard that for now, many, many, many years. And we've also seen the hard work that our staffing leadership has done, i.e. Mr. Trumell now going off to another position. And this has led into opportunities outside of our district because we are not paying them to stay. This all being said, there are three core areas that we have to assure that we are investing in. When I hear we're gonna ask to go ahead and cut nearly five hundred thousand dollars out of a reasonable budget, in which we also heard the superintendent say he's got other money that he'd like to put back in, the three core areas that we need to find are facilities, curriculum instruction, and community and culture. Superintendent, I've heard you say now for two years in a row, you're providing a budget to just get by. And I don't mean this negatively to you whatsoever, you're doing what you think is best because you're concerned that you're gonna get shut down. But you have said to us again tonight that there's short of one and a half million dollars to advance our district and sure we are adequately building our base in the areas of facility, curriculum instruction, and community and culture. So I'm flabbergasted because I initially wanted to challenge the board to answer, are we asking the right questions? Are we providing a budget to assure we're giving the superintendent enough resources to meet the definition of success that was developed in partnership with our community? Yet we have budget committee members who don't know that. I for one don't believe we're answering the question effectively nor helping our superintendent or his leadership team, the staff, and our kids enough. Especially when they're, uh, put a half a million dollar cut on the floor right away. I want to fund for education and for our students. I'm sick and tired of the biggest gem in our district actually being neglected. As we heard people say, we have to fund these buildings and upkeep them. But yet we kicked the can down the road and now we end up in a position like we do with the middle school. I do not support not funding education, not funding students and our staff. I do not want, I hope that others are more reasonable than that. Unbelievable. I will not say anything else.
Here's, here's my concern with that. We build our budgets by line. You go and you say textbooks, what do we need with textbooks? You put this item in and you put the cost in. Then you go to the next line item, the next line item, the next line item. If you had come and said, you know, I would like to cut it one point two eight percent from two point seven four, which is what you're suggesting. Because I think the book line is fifty thousand, I think we can get away with, with forty-five thousand, so there's five thousand. I think overtime for custodians is sixty thousand, I think we can reduce it by ten, there's ten thousand. And after you put your lines together, you say, okay, this is where I think we can cut and this is my reasons why I think we can cut that and this is why I want to cut it to this amount. But to just come in and say, you know, we have a two point seven four recommendation by the superintendent and I think that's too high, I just want to cut it by one point two eight percent down to, um, you know, one point four six percent, right? Assuming my numbers are right, how am I doing so far? Okay. You know, I, I don't think that's the way you build a budget or you should handle a budget. You will come in and argue that I think this is overpriced or I think we can get away with less fine. But to just walk in and say, you know, we don't build the budget that way and I don't think we should reduce the budget that way. The superintendent gave us line by line by line why these costs are. Argue that though, that his, I don't agree with his line item, fine. But to walk in and say, I just want to cut it, again, one point two eight percent, I, I, I can't go along with that. Because we don't build the budget that way, I don't think we should subtract the budget that way.
I've got a rationale, would you like me to speak to it?
Sure.
Okay. I believe that the district has finally arrived at a place that some of us have been warning about. It's not the fault of the new superintendent or the current board or most of the people in this room. The fault is years of poor planning and unsustainable financial expectations. I'm not looking to micromanage this reduction. I'm looking for the superintendent and the administration, if this proposal is passed, to figure out where the money can come from. Last year, we and the administration did a very good job on the budget. Plus we funded the school second year of a generous teacher's contract and substantially increased the dollars put into professional development. It was a good plan and the voters passed it. This year, the entire administration and board have worked hard again to control costs. Plus they're planning ways to realign dollars to improve academics. But we haven't addressed the main problem. Too many facilities and continued declines in enrollment. Neighboring schools are being successful with lower costs per student. We're starting to do, do a good job now in the high school. The overspending is in the lower grades. We currently spend three thousand per child more than comparable-sized elementary schools. We're finally working on it, but we don't have a plan yet. We need a middle school proposal, that's being worked on. We need a plan to dispose of the old seminary building, that's being worked on. This year we'll have employment contracts to put before the voters that we want to pass. We need to see the final employment contracts. I see all of the above not as separate budgets, but as one cost that the taxpayers will be asked to fund. In light of the above, I think the proposed operating budget is too high. In September, I said I would support a total increase of point five percent. We're not even close to that in the superintendent's proposal. So tonight I am proposing a five hundred thousand operating budget increase. That's a substantial increase over my September proposal, but less of an increase than the superintendent's proposed nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-dollar increase. The good news is we're dealing with a temporary condition. If we come up with a viable middle school plan, that's a minimum savings of five hundred thousand dollars a year. If we come up with a viable plan to consolidate the elementary schools, that's an estimated to be a one point five million savings a year. These aren't one-time savings, these are yearly savings. That is a lot of money that year after year can go into increasing teacher salaries and professional development and facilities maintenance without increasing taxes. In about seven years, the high school bond will be paid off. That is another two million a year that can go into those areas. So the future looks good. But we need to make and execute those plans. And we know we need, what we need to do, but we're not there yet. But I believe we can get there. But in the meantime, the, the, because of the, the lack of, of judicious planning over the years, we're once again gonna ask the taxpayers to cover for us. And I'm not willing to do that. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Anyone else?
Jim, for one thing, I do not agree with your five hundred thousand dollars, just wipe it off the top. I would like to hear where you think that five hundred thousand should come from, item by item if necessary. Otherwise, it's just, let's just throw a figure out and see where it goes. I don't like that. Give me an idea of where you want to take that money from.
It's more money than the default budget.
But not by much.
And... Not that much.
No, it's not. But my gut instinct is that in March, that's what the school board is, is gonna be asked to deal with, that's what the administration is gonna be asked to deal with. So I'm putting, and we want the, we want the employment contracts to pass. That's a priority for me. The teachers and the taxpayers have the ones that, have the ones that have taken the hits over the years. The operating budget has not taken a hit. We, we're maintaining these extra facilities that we don't need. What we need is to pay the teachers. If we knock this budget down and the administration can figure it out, I believe they're gonna need to figure it out anyway.
This is our budget.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna micromanage where the money comes from. I'm gonna let that administration figure that out. That's my proposal. And the reasons why.
Finished?
I guess, I, I just...
Anyone else?
Uh, I've got a comment.
Okay, well, I'll be there in a second. Pam?
So, the new number that Mr. Baker's proposing is an increase in the budget for next year. And we had a one point five unexpendited surplus this fall, which was returned to taxpayers. Our enrollments are not projected to increase and rather than micromanage as, um, is not the board's job, I do see areas for savings. And I hope that we can save some money in our facilities very soon, in the next eighteen months. This expenditures over the next year and, to be a year and a half, are the biggest moving target I've seen in a district in a long time. But if you'd like to add back, things back in such as emergency fund for various purposes, one million dollars, I'd rather have that go as a warrant to the voters rather than requested as part of a budget, for example, um, and those should be separated out. And we also have three collective bargaining agreements coming up with, I assume, increases in pay for staff. So, given, um, areas for savings, which again, we're leaving up to the administration, and given that I do support emergency funds that are warranted and the situation with our enrollment, I think a modest increase next year is completely reasonable.
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dave. I told him I was recognizing next. All right.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tammy, go ahead.
You, you've already spoken once, so please keep it very short.
Okay, no, I... We, we should have given the superintendent, Jim, grounds to work with it. And like if you, if you came into this negotiation with the understanding in your head that you're gonna support a point five percent increase because that was a viable cost of doing business increase, you should have set that expectation to the superintendent and to the rest of the board. Because now we're trying to retract our offering to him and explain to him, what is it, and asking him what he needs to present back to us.
Corey, I don't know if you were here at that meeting, but I did present a point five percent.
This year, every single board meeting. And not only that, but I also know that, my point being is like, we've all questioned the outcomes that we're getting out of curriculum and instruction. And we're now here, I'm now hearing, yet once again, we're putting that second to the fact that we've neglected our facilities and the fact that we have, you know, obviously some outstanding funds and expenses there and there. And I agree with both of you, Pam and also Larry, uh, Jim, about that. But you know what? Let's fund education and take care of that other stuff. And if, in two years, we have a decrease in the, our own operating budget because of those things we took care of, that's great. We're investing in education. By removing half a million dollars just because, without actual advice from the leadership team, that's, that's asinine. I'm just not, I'm not able to support that.
All right, thank you.
I'll stop, but just educate and expend, education.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so I just, just to, I just want to kind of whatever, go through. The, our purpose tonight is to come up with our budget. We're gonna send this number to the budget committee. This is not a final number, this is just our proposed budget. The budget committee will come up with their own number and then they're gonna come back to us, just so kind of we're all, we all know where we are in the process here. The number that Mr. Baker suggested is fifty thousand dollars higher than the default budget, just, I'm not sure if the default budget number got thrown out there. I have it as thirty-five million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
He's correct, right?
Yep.
That's my understanding.
So that's, so it would be fifty thousand dollars higher than the default budget number. And I, when Mr. Baker says he's afraid that the default budget number is what we're going to end up with anyway, what he means is that he's afraid, and I share his concern, at least at that level, that the voters are going to take a look at the number that the total proposed budget is almost a million dollars higher than this year's budget, if we go for that number. They're gonna take a look at that number and then they're gonna look at staffing contract increases, which we have at least two and maybe three that are going to be on the warrant. The concern is that they're going to vote it all down and I really want to see the teachers' contract pass. That's, for me, that is the priority. The T, I mean, I've heard from, I've heard, you know, pretty much a, a theme among almost everyone that I see, you know, speaking on social media and coming before us, expressing that the teachers are the, you know, one of the, it's all a team, I don't want to say that no one's important, but the teachers are, they're the, they're fundamental. We need to retain our teachers, we need to make sure that their contracts, you know, pass. So that, that's a huge concern. If the budget, we can decide on any budget number we want to, but if we don't decide on a reasonable budget number, the voters are not gonna vote for it and we're going to, we're going to have the default budget number anyway. So I think, I mean, I, my feeling is I would like to come up with a number that's maybe, maybe a compromise between the proposed and the number that Mr. Baker suggested. Because it is very difficult to look at the proposed budget and decide what we should eliminate.
So I, can I speak? Uh, I can help a little because as I said at the last meeting when I answered the budget questions, that there was an error in the high school staffing because we have a staff member out on leave. No, we, we need to talk about this because the reality is, is that I hear the concerns and you have basically what Jim's proposing is a four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-dollar cut to the superintendent's proposed budget. And I'm just, I'm addressing what you just said. So let's just say that we did what you just said and found middle ground, right? Middle ground would be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right? Because three, um, I'm sorry, I apologize, that wasn't great math. Um, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I, I said publicly at the last board meeting that, that we did have an error in the calculation for the high school, so that's about eighty-five thousand dollars. So certainly, for transparency's sake, I, I certainly think that, that... So certainly, for transparency's sake, I certainly think that the board should deliberate what to do about that position. I think it's also important for the board to talk about, you know, I can't, there's nothing in this list that I can look you straight in the face and say, yep, just lop it off. I wouldn't give it to you if I could. That wouldn't be transparent. But I think that you need to really decide, I understand, this budget was one of the hardest things I've ever created, for the very reasons that you've just outlined, right? I mean, really, I don't, I definitely, like, there's more gray hair, right? And I lost a lot of sleep for about three weeks just trying to figure out what to do. So I can't tell you, I can tell you that if we get the default budget, nothing in this proposal gets funded except special education. That's what will happen. So I don't have to explain it. Just go through the whole PowerPoint and take everything out that was in there that's a need of any kind of increase, except for special education, because the default budget is basically the current year's budget plus special education. So I just thought I'd answer that question to help you move forward, right? And if you did, Tammy, propose a middle, you know, a middle, if you're looking for 232,110, then there was an additional position at the high school in the original proposed budget that I explained two weeks ago. So I did say at that meeting that the board would need to deliberate that.
Ellie?
I, I'm not in favor of cutting the proposed budget from the superintendent. I'm with Corey on this one because I feel it's important for this board to put forward to the public what it feels is a priority budget. We take the chance of getting it cut, yes. You end up with 480,000 less anyway. Not the way I like the budget. I'd like to see them get passed. The board in the past and the budget committee has lost credibility over the last several years. We haven't passed a lot of budgets, and that's a shame. But I think we have a new sheriff in town, as the saying goes. And I think Mr. Ambrose has helped gain a lot of credibility for the board, for the leadership team, for the district, for the kids. All of that's coming into play, and I think the voters are going, you have to give the voters a chance to say a or nay. If they feel that that 2.5 percent is too much, they're going to say no, they're going to go to the default. If they believe they want to give a fairly new superintendent a chance to come through on the issues of the day, on his priority of making education for kids come first. We know the buildings are a problem, and Mr. Ambrose has been very upfront about that, especially on the elementary level. I understand what you're saying, Jim, because the voters are going to, taxes are tough, and it gets tougher every year.
Kingston had a big increase this year.
Kingston had a big increase, but not everybody in Kingston. But be that as it may, I think we need to give the voters a chance. It does put the teachers' contract at risk. I've seen it happen enough times over the last 40 years. That is a problem. Depends on what we do for a teacher's thing. We're coming out of a very dark area economically as a country, and it's, we don't want to just go spending money crazily, but I don't think this is a crazy budget. I love the, I can read a lot of things into it that I would never have seen in a budget before, and that was very helpful. I mean, I can tell you, I don't think we need to get a snow blower, but that's not the priority. And if we have to eliminate it for another year, that superintendent's going to do that anyways. A snow blower's not going to make the difference. I think we need to tell people, this is what we need. We ask for your support. A lot of times in the past, you know, I come from the newspaper business, the last 10 years, it's been very, the board members asking the public for their support has been nonexistent. Non-existent, no. I've been appalled at the fact that you guys didn't ask the people for their support. And if you don't ask, you will not get.
Can I just clarify one thing? The snow blower's not in the budget. It was in the list of items that we did not... I just, everybody keep talking about this snow blower. Honestly, I wanted a ride on snow blower. That sounds really fun.
I should have said the tuba and the bassoon.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the public knows.
Oh, you can eliminate, all right. I feel bad for the kid.
Snow blower is in the, very important, but not included in the budget list.
He's looking for an alternative way to get home when there's a snowstorm.
Right, right. I don't have a...
I'm also in favor, I'm not done yet. I'm also in favor of taking a look at that million and a half really wants, as opposed to the needs, because I see them as wants, and maybe picking two and put them on the warrant. If we don't tell the people what we need and what we want to have and why we want to have them, they're never going to know. And they might say no to us on a warrant for a couple of years and then say yes. If they're on a warrant and it's voted down, you can't pay for it anywhere else. Tell you right that's...
That's the problem, because, well, let's do this budget. So one thing that I just want to tell you all to think about too is, I wanted to answer the question, what would go, right? So I did. The second point that I want to bring out is, you know, one option is for you all to reduce this budget by the teaching position, send that to the Budcom, and then have it discussed at the first deliberative. Because the community has the option to come out at the first deliberative and make adjustments to the budget. That's a real possibility for you. I can't, when you open the doors at less than a 3% increase, there are reductions, because the cost of doing business typically goes up by 3%. However, the teachers' contracts aren't in this budget, right? Electricity, gas, trust me, they're going up by 3%, right?
Or more.
Or more. I know, I was being, special ed, some things are going up by 7% or 8%. So I'm not, I just want for transparency for the public, when the administration gives the board a 2 points, was it 2.78? I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized. You know, an increase at that point, it isn't, you know, when we take out the 85,000, that brings it down to under 900,000, to 879,420.
Let me just clarify something for the people, because you may not know this, and I just want to make sure we know. When we come up with a number tonight, we're going to send that to the budget committee. That budget committee is then going to say, I agree, we want to lower it, we want to increase it. They're going to come back to us, we're going to try to negotiate between the two of us. That's when, if we can't negotiate, the school board will submit a budget and the budget committee will make a budget. So I just want to understand that whatever number we send to the budget committee tonight, that is, it's not like, oh, that's going to be the budget. So just make sure you understand that. So unless there's further discussion, and I'm guessing everybody had their chance, I will call for a vote, okay? So I just want to make sure I have the number correct. Am I correct? The number is 35,648,700?
Yes.
648,700, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can I just say something? Sorry. I just want to clarify, because I just, I should have used my calculator. I just, I bugged the numbers. That's actually a $30,000 increase over the default budget.
Yeah, I was going to...
Sorry, Michelle. I was probably over there like, oh, my gosh.
My system just shut down on me.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. Excuse me.
So, I'm going to say the motion is, if I'm correct, to put the recommended budget from the school board to the budget committee of 35,648,700. Is that correct?
Correct.
You got that all right, fellas? Okay. Okay. All in favor? It's two. Opposed?
Aye.
Five. Okay, you have the names? I don't think we need the names, but it's always good to have them, all right? So you get, okay.
Roll call votes technically.
I don't know if it has to be a roll call on this particular one.
Why would this be a roll call?
No, I didn't think so. It's always good to have it, just in case.
When you have a remote member, you have, you're supposed to, all votes are supposed to be by roll.
Oh, I see. Because Corey's not here. Okay, that's why I want to...
So you got Jim and Pam for it. Larry, Ellie, myself. Okay, okay. So the motion is defeated. Okay. Do we have another motion to come up with a number to send to the budget committee?
Still moved.
Well, what's the number? I think it's 36,112,427.
427.
Am I correct on that?
Mine is the 85,000. I moved that, that...
You're moving the superintendent's proposed?
Do you want to take the 85,000 out of there for the teaching position?
No, you know what I would suggest? We discuss that when the budget committee sends their budget back.
Well, they know, half of them are hearing.
Well, I know that. All right. Well, if you want to cut it, if you want to reduce it by that 85, I mean, it does six of one, that doesn't the other.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve 36,112...
36 million.
36 million, I'm sorry. 112,427 as the budget that we present at this time to the budget committee.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to tell you why, just to let you know, I negotiated a lot of things in my time. There's 85,000 we can negotiate later on. I don't want to negotiate with the budget committee before. Sure, they're going to send that back to us, all right? I'm a negotiator, right?
I'm going to be sitting over there telling them we're going to bring it back.
Yeah, okay. But to move on for tonight, you know, because we're going to have a lot of discussion later on about their recommendation, our recommendation. That's why I wanted the public to know how it works. Okay, further discussion. Okay, move the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four? Okay, opposed? Okay, so that'd be, you got the names? Reason we're doing this, folks, is we have a person off-site, and I believe the RSA says we have to have it by roll call vote. So you've got, I mean, I'm not technically doing a roll call, but she's running it down that way. Okay. Any other discussion concerning the budget? Okay, so we will move on to second public comment. Don't all rush going, "Dunce, nobody wants to be the next contestant on The Price is Right?" Ah, I knew, see, I knew you couldn't not do it.
Oh, Tammy, come on.
Oh, I need a copy of this. I'll take that. So...
Please stay with the agenda.
My name is Tammy Gluck from Newton. And I just want to, I'm kind of predicting what's going to be coming in your next discussion at your meeting when you have your budget committee's figure come back, and I think we had a precursor to that. It's concerning to me that a school board member could come forward with a figure without any rationale as to where he would want to see, or where the member would want those cuts to be made. And that was discussed here with your comments. The school board has a very well-trained, well-educated, well-versed administrative team and superintendent, and it just seems that it's not trusting the proposal that the administrators put forward and just arbitrarily cutting 400 and some thousand dollars. As a community member, it bothers me. And I would just want to say, as Ellie said in her comments, the board members in whatever budget that you come out with in conjunction with the budget committee, if you bring it to the voters and you're unified in your message and you give the voters a chance to approve it and support it with sound rationale that your administration has provided to you, give the voters a chance to approve that. Don't assume we're not going to pass a budget, we're not going to pass that in a teacher's contract. There will always be people in the community that won't support those things, because they're just looking at the bottom line and their tax dollars. But I feel if the school board members were to support the administration's budget and the rationale behind it, the definition of student success in bringing forward that proposal to the community and the voters, it would stand a much better chance of passing rather than having a discussion and assuming here that we're asking for too much. So that's my comment.
Hi, I'm Crystal Brown, Newton. The future looks great, and I like to look out for the 18 months when we're going to have more money available, things shifted around. But I think that's a good way to support a budget that may be higher this year, because there is an end in sight versus having a year or two of limbo with things that students need, who are going through years now, and going to move on or even just to higher grades, and not having what they need now. But if I'm told, hey, this budget's a little higher, it stinks. We all know it, we carry the weight, but we're doing all of this now that is going to facilitate these changes, that can lower the taxes down the road, but the students today need this now. So that's, thanks.
I did want to let the admins know that they can go home. They've got a long day today and tomorrow, so they're all sitting back there. The budget deliberation's done, so back to business.
Okay.
Thanks for being here, everyone.
Other business? I don't believe there is any other business. Anybody have any other business? No? Okay. Next meeting agenda, have we, we haven't set that up?
It'll be budget primarily, and policies.
Yes.
Right, Pam?
Policies A, B, and C.
D, E, F, H.
No, I'm just kidding. And again, I'm hoping to put that through as one vote. All right, fellas, do you have that all right? Budget policy? And I believe it's A, B, and C?
Yeah, there's one more, but yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Fellas, now we'll get up.
I already gave the announcements, but we're going to be here Wednesday, the 19th. The budget committee is going to be tomorrow night.
So let's move on.
So, let's, exactly. So, let's go to the non-public. That concludes the public session of the meeting, but I believe we have one more non-public to go into.
Briefly, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we go into non-public session per RSA 91-A, colon, 3, 2, Charlie and Delta.
You're telling a Navy man. Okay.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Ellie seconded it. Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Yes, 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 yes. Corey, yes. That's unanimous by voice vote.